Thank you very much indeed. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the meeting of the Health Overview and Scrutiny Committee on Monday the 8th of September. Thank you all so much for giving up the time this afternoon to join us. Agenda item—oh, I'd just like to remind everybody that we're here, we're being webcast, and can we keep the questions, members, very strategic? It's not an opportunity to talk about personal stories. Thank you very much. Agenda item one, apologies for absence, please.
Thank you, Chair. No apologies.
Thank you very much. I think I should introduce the fact that Tom Pollock is sat on my left-hand side because Sam Morris is on holiday this week as well. And I think everybody knows Emma Holmes, she's introduced herself, she's on a job share with Jo Weston for this committee, so thank you very much, and thanks, Emma, for attending, as well as Jo. So, any declarations of interest, please, and any whipping arrangements? None? Thank you very much. Public participation, there isn't any, is there, Tom?
No, Chair.
Thank you. So, we move to the confirmation of the minutes of the previous meeting, which was held on Wednesday the 30th of July. Can I sign these off as a true and accurate record, please? Agreed? Thank you very much. So, we move swiftly on to our main subject matter this afternoon, and I welcome the public health team and colleagues. It's engaging neighbourhoods and communities in health improvement. Thank you very much indeed for putting together this paper, which made good reading, thank you, and much of it resonated with myself when we were looking at Westlands, et cetera. I'd like to hand over to Dr Lisa McNally, our Director of Public Health, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'm not going to speak for long because it's a lengthy paper, and I know that committee members will want to dive into some of the detail. So, I'll just do a very brief intro, and then if I may, pass down the line so that colleagues from other organisations can say a few words as well to set up their contribution, because this paper is very much a work of us all, and thanks to colleagues for your work on the paper.
Dr McNally, might it be a good idea to introduce each one of the teams, get them to introduce themselves as well—
Yeah, sure.
So, Lisa McNally, DPH.
councillor sitting the bell, CMR for Health and Wellbeing.
Good afternoon. Sarah Speck, Director of Place Development for the NHS, with a bit of a croaky voice. Sorry.
Good afternoon, everyone. Jane Thomas, I'm Head of Patient and Public Engagement, Experience and Participation from the Health and Care Trust.
Julian Berlett, Anistis in the Acute Trust and Chief Clinical Strategy Officer.
Hello, I'm Ruth Lemieux. I'm Managing Director of Wild Forest Health Partnerships. We run five GP practices in the Wild Forest.
Thank you very much indeed. I'm sorry to interrupt you there, Dr McNally, but back to you.
Thank you, Chair. So, I think I'll start with a quote. One, many of you'll have heard me quote before from Dr Mark Hyman, who's a physician in the USA, who's quote on this subject really summarises the whole thing for me. And he said that the power of community to create health is far greater than any physician, clinical, hospital. And really, that's what this paper is about. And I know I have the agreement of all the physicians in the room. I know I've got one right in front of me and more to the left, but I know they agree with that as well. The clinical care alone can't close the gap in health inequalities, that real change only happens when we give local people not just a voice, but a stake and a role, a real, genuine role in shaping things. And I hope you'll see that that principle runs through everything you'll hear today. So, the paper starts with some public health work. Firstly, it's important to note that the work described is only a small sample of what we could have included. You know, it's a long paper already. It could have been six times as long, and particularly the public health section, I was very conscious to not hog the whole paper, so that there's more we could have talked about. And of course, nothing, certainly in the public section, but I'd argue all the sections, none of it's been done alone. So, I can say our public health work that we talk about has been done hand-in-hand with colleagues from district councils, with help from the voluntary sector, NHS partners, and importantly, elected members, many of which I see around me, including both the Chair and Deputy Chair, councillor Wild, and many others have been active participants in this work. So, nothing's been done alone. So, the first piece of work we talk about is the Priority Neighbourhood Development Programme, the PND Programme, which is data-driven, it targets—we carried out data analyses to the combined a number of variables to pull out those small neighbourhoods, and when I say neighbourhood, I mean neighbourhood, 1,500 to 3,000 people, a lower super-output area, those 14 neighbourhoods that are—that seem to have the most unmet need in terms of health. A lot of them were in our more deprived areas, but not all of them. There's a linear relationship between socio-economic deprivation and health, but it's not a perfect correlation, and not all of the 14 areas were in that most deprived area. And then we set about working with residents in those areas to co-design and co-deliver solutions to some of the major issues that they felt they face. The big pilot, as we all know, was the one on the Westlands Estate in Droidwich, and that delivered a whole host of programmes still going on today with residents, with a group of residents that we trusted, not just with our time, but with significant amounts of money, as you know. And what we saw at the follow-up was that emergency admissions have fallen by seven per cent, where they had risen elsewhere in the county, and child in need referrals to social care dropped by 13 per cent. And in the particular bit of Westlands that we worked most with, that figure went up to 24 per cent. So, very measurable changes in the fortunes of that area, and it was achieved by trust. Trust in the residents to know what they needed, trust in them to spend the resources wisely. It was a controversial decision, as you remember at the time, to invest for us to write a cheque and hand it to a resident committee, but we're so glad we did. And of course, that won the National Public Health Award this year in 2025, and really put Worcestershire on the map for that type of work. The other thing I've written about in our paper is our school grants. I love our school grants, where you say to a head teacher and his or her school team, "What do you want to do?" You know, "What crazy idea do you have that would improve the health and wellbeing of your school community, especially, of course, the children?" And partner grant in their hands for them to do things, came up with ideas that I would never have thought of in a million years, from sensory rooms and balance bikes to therapy dogs. And councillor Bell was featured on BBC Television with some gerbils, which was a first for her. But we—you know, it was the children and the school coming together, saying, "You know what will help?" They weren't gerbils, they were guinea pigs. I apologise. Apologise to all guinea pigs watching. And it was—and the young girl that came in talked about how when she was feeling angry, when she was feeling stressed, given time to look after these little pets helped her calm herself, and the teachers talked about how children were able to retain their focus and regulation. I wouldn't have thought of that, but the head teachers and the schools and the children knew. I also need to represent our communities directorates as well. Hannah Perrett's team also do the most amazing work, delivering health and squeezing health outcomes out of our health assets. So, for example, they work with us on the health walks, our green spaces, the Countryside Centre, all of these things. They say in the paper, they've got volunteers up to 10,000 hours annually, people standing alongside professionals, delivering programmes that have a direct effect on health. So, I've spoken enough. What I'm going to do is pass down the line. Shall we do councillor Bell last to sum up, and if we go to our NHS colleagues? Would that make sense, Chair?
Absolutely. Councillor Bell's happy to go last, that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just give a very quick overview and try and save my voice a little bit, if that's okay. So, we know we've got—in within the NHS, we've got the 10-year health plan. We know about the focus on moving from hospital to community, from analogue to digital, from illness to prevention. We know we've got a neighbourhood health framework that we're all working towards, and I think those guidelines really are explicit in describing work between the NHS, the local authority, the voluntary sector, higher education, and the people of the—in the communities that we serve in a better way and in a more coordinated way. I think in Worcestershire, we're in a really good position. We've got strong relationships within our—with our clinical and managerial colleagues across the NHS, and really strong relationships across the local authorities and into the areas that we want to work with. These relationships are really important. Within the NHS, we've been working in a neighbourhood way for a long time, so we're in a good position to start there. But really fundamental to me to how we're going to make this work is we've got very strong local communities, who if we empower and give the opportunity to get involved in this work, we'll really be ahead of the game. So, for me, this is all about partnership, working, and everybody having a seat at the table. And I'm here to help facilitate that in whatever way I can, as long as I'm able to speak.
Thank you, Sarah. Jane?
Thank you. Unfortunately, there isn't anything included in the paper about the work of the Health and Care Trust, so forgive me if I just run through some of the programmes of work that we've got going on, because I think they really do illustrate very, very well the way that we are engaging people and working to empower them. We are very, very active with our participation groups, adult groups, and also children and young people. We have a youth board that is very well-attended, and we've seen young people come through that group and progress on to a whole range of exciting careers, and many of them have said, you know, having been a member of the youth board has really increased confidence and encouraged them to get involved in health as a career. We are just at the very, very final stages of launching Care Opinion. This is a patient and carer experience feedback platform. And it's—I'm very pleased to say that most of the feedback for the trust is really positive, but the whole idea of the platform really is to offer the organisation and services, because the feedback goes directly to them, opportunities for learning and change. And so, for me, this is one really powerful way of engaging communities, to be active in the services that we offer and helping us improve those services. We are working with on-site advocacy. An independent patient experience visitor attends our mental health wards, and as a result of engaging with the patients on those mental health wards, we've been listening to the patients' feedback and have made many changes, for example, bringing yoga onto the ward. They've said that that really helps in terms of their wellbeing, and also sort of things like the provision of food nights to encourage more a social space amongst the patients there. We're very active around the volunteering and participation agenda, a whole range of stuff, working—from volunteers, working on gardening projects, through to chaplaincy, and through to strategic volunteering as well. We've just actually recently had the feedback from a survey that we ran, asking our participation partners to tell us about their experience of volunteering and participating for the trust. Some of the words I have to share with you, they say, "It's interesting, worthwhile, satisfying and meaningful." They feel valued, respected, included, listened to, and rewarded. And one comment said, "It was a privilege to have this new family." We are very, very active around the carer agenda and trying to ensure that carers are identified, involved and supported. We've got a number of projects for carers. We are working with Worcestershire Association of Carers around the Accelerating Reform Fund in both our stroke services and our community hospitals. A lot of progress around health inequalities at a service level, and also part of the Patient and Carer Race Equality Framework. Big programme of work around health literacy, reviewing all of our documentation and websites, and bigger accessibility programme. But I think all of this is really important because it ensures we engage with our communities in a range of ways and empower them to be active in their own health and wellbeing. And I think in the paper, it was mentioned about the two engagement network instrumental in developing those, both in Herefordshire, the Herefordshire Engagement Network, and the Worcestershire Engagement Network, making sure that we work very closely with system partners. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jane. Julian, please.
Thank you, Chair. You may wonder why someone from the Acute Trust is sitting here, because we're not really about communities and neighbourhoods. We're here to treat illness and ill health. And that's a perception that we are starting to challenge within the Acute Trust, and I hope you'll be glad to hear that. Colleagues within the Acute Trust realise that despite the significant spend on healthcare across the county, we can never meet the demand that is currently being placed and the increasing demand being placed on NHS services. So, everyone understands we have to do things differently. And that's whilst accepting that the primary responsibility of the Acute Trust is to treat disease and illness and ill health. We are shifting the perception within the Acute Trust towards a consideration of the global health of the population, and that's where our work with partners that you're seeing sitting here actually comes to the fore. So, already we have really good engagement across the system, and I was slightly late, I do apologise, Chair, but that was because I was chairing what we call the Primary and Secondary Care Interface Meeting with representatives from primary care, the ICB, from the Health and Care Trust, Acute Trust colleagues, public health, who all come together to work on pathways around doing the best things for patients, accepting that an awful lot of money is being spent, but considering whether we can spend things differently to get a better overall outcome. We've recently refreshed our strategy, and we're now, myself and colleagues, are going out to all the clinical teams to refresh our clinical services strategy for the next five years. And one of the key questions, or some of the key questions, are, can any of the current Acute Trust services, could they be better provided in community or primary care settings, and what would we need to do to consider that? But also, we're asking all the services to consider the overall health of the population, not just the individual demands of the patients that they see in front of them. So, I'm effectively here because we're just shifting that narrative a little bit to try to focus on the population. And the paper details some of the other ways that as an acute trust, we engage the community and those patients and service users who we need to serve.
Thank you very much, Julian. I've got a question for you immediately, but I'll come back at the end. Thank you, Ruth.
Thank you. So, as I said, I'm representing primary care and specifically the Wild Forest Health Partnership. And I think one of the reasons you asked me along today is the ICB just over a year ago gave us a small amount of money to really try and demonstrate what we could do around this neighbourhood thinking. We were what was called an accelerator site. And I think it's difficult to capture in the paper the genuine energy and excitement that we found working far more closer together in and with our communities. And I think that's something that's incredibly powerful, and we've got a really strong base that we can build on now. The other thing that's great about primary care generally, but especially in Worcestershire, is we have fantastic data about our patients. So, working with colleagues in public health and working with the voluntary sector, we can really target the interventions to the people that need them. So, I think we're starting from a strong base, but there's lots more to come here, I'm sure.
Thank you very much, Ruth. Councillor Bell, did you want to say anything?
Thank you. So, I would just like to thank you, Lisa, and the public health team first, for all the work, which is hard work, has gone into in presenting this paper. And thank you to all the colleagues here for their inputs. And Jane has presented really well, and all those feedbacks are really empowering, which you've managed to gather. So, from community point of view, I have had the chance to visit a family hub today itself, the Brookside and Kidderminster, and then we went over to the primary school in Combertown. So, these are the places. It was good to see that how they are using these support which we are putting there from public health, from Worcestershire County Council, and how these resources are well-being used. And there was this really bright boy who explained himself that how useful it is for them for the sensory rooms in the school. So, for us, approach in public health at this point is to focus on what we have 10-year health plan, that, you know, we should be looking at prevention, and we need to put those interventions early on. I'm a clinical lead for urgent care in the Acute Trust, being an ED consultant myself. So, when I—we want to work really closely with the Acute Trust as well, because there are long waiting times in the hospital. We talk about back door all the time and why people are waiting for beds, but there's so much more problem in the pre-hospital side. We really need to look at what's there missing in the community, why these patients have to end up into the front door, or especially out of hours on the weekends. So, how we can make it better. So, looking at urgent care services, I think there is a gap in our county where people have to go far away for, you know, diagnostics, for other services which they have to get for their medical care. So, there is a potential that we should be looking at that how we can develop something, a one-stop shop where people can get all these services and they don't have to go to acute hospital for that. Now, Healthy Worcestershire Programme is another programme which we have managed to roll out to other sites as well. So, for example, for lunches, there was a really high uptake for that, and it was a good, successful session, and we have next one coming up into Reddit. So, for me, it's really good that—to—you know, I'm in a position to drive these projects, which we are churning out from public health, from—also, from mental health point of view. We know there is a lot of challenge we are facing, especially on the adult social care side and sense and children and communities. So, we are building on some projects which will help with our young people, our young children or youth for coping strategies, that how they can become more resilient and they build on, so that they come out stronger when we put that support in place. And they are not stuck at one point, but they come out stronger and become resilient, and they flourish, you know, as they move in their life. So, those are things we want to build on from public health. So, I do thank you, everyone here, and the public health team.
Thank you very much to you two for coming along this afternoon and talking to us about it. We've got to open it up to discussion now, really. All right, so councillor Wells has got his hand up first. Please signal and catch my eye if you'd like to ask a question.
Chair, thank you, and good afternoon, everyone. And first of all, thank you for the work that you guys do in your different spheres on behalf of people in Worcestershire. The first question I've got is relating to the introduction in point seven, where your initiatives have won national awards, which is great news, but then you say, "And has had a measurable impact on outcomes." Could you just give me a little bit of flavour for what your measurable impact on outcomes looks like?
Yes, thank you. So, to give you an example, we will look at emergency admissions. We will look at referrals from children's social care. So, for example, in Westlands, we—you need to give, obviously, these community projects time, but we— But we went in after about 18 months from the injection of money in community development capacity. And we saw significant changes in the right direction of both emergency admissions and children in need care referrals. Both of those outcomes are proxies for where need isn't being met by provision, I think. And it was no surprise to me that the child in need referrals are reduced because a lot of the programmes that we deliver through community development support parents and support families. We also do other types of evaluations. So for example, we look at the level of social isolation, social contact, which also improved. And also the access to mental health support, timely mental health support. So it's a mixture of both outcome and access variables which we will apply onwards. In terms of the school grants, we tend to take a more qualitative approach. And we ask the schools to do videos. We ask them to tell the story of the benefits that these have had. And so, for example, where the balance bikes have been put in place, we've got numbers of how many children are now have learned to cycle and are cycling to school, how many have gone on to do advanced courses. We see comments such as the ones that councillor Bell heard on the BBC about the girl saying how her, essentially what she was saying in other words, is her mental wellbeing has improved. So it's a mix of qualitative and quantitative impact measures, I would say.
Thank you very much.
Chair, can I just butt in again? Sorry, just to continue the theme. And then, of course, the Local Health and Wellbeing Strategy 22 to 32 is now in its third year. My understanding is it's good practice to review and revise rather than just leave it as a sort of standing document. So how, three years in now to the Local Health and Wellbeing Strategy, are things going? And what's gone well and what hasn't gone well?
So I can certainly talk about that. Just to note that an update is coming to the next Health and Wellbeing Board about the next iteration, update of the Health and Wellbeing Strategy, which was formed when councillor May was cabinet member. But certainly I can give you an overview that we've made progress on a lot of measures there. Some faster than others, some are, you know, some are ambiguous, I would say. For example, rates of depression, is more diagnoses of depression better or worse? You know, there's a whole debate around that. And so I don't want to steal the thunder of the Health and Wellbeing Board update, but certainly we've seen a lot of positive movement on a lot of those measures.
Final one for me, if I might, Chair. Okay, so we wait with bated breath really for the revision. And I'm sorry that we can't get a bigger flavour today. Now, just a final question from me. Reading through the report, it does seem that we are at least to a degree dependent on the district collaboratives to help us deliver this. And that in fact is a conduit for achieving the outcomes we all desire. Now, we know local government reviews just around the corner now. Could you, obviously looking ahead to ensure your wellbeing strategies are developed, we have this hiatus just in front of us now. Could you give me an understanding of how important the district role is in establishing those collectives and collaboratives? And in the event that they no longer exist, do we, as a strategic authority, have the have the tools to reach in, not just to the hard-to-reach groups in Redditch or wherever they may be, but more generally to the half a million populace that we serve? I'm not sure we, as a county council or even the NHS as a huge body, can really drill down into those communities. And as an example, I wonder, and this is something, you know, that I've been thinking about for a while, in order to try to deliver health and wellbeing into those communities, could we recognise the infrastructure that already exists, things like village halls? And can we award some kind of status, I don't know, a community wellbeing hub, which they can pull on their wall? Because much of those village halls are now delivering exactly this agenda. But perhaps we could badge it and identify it more than just going into the areas in Worcestershire where the healthy life expectancy is about 61. Okay, absolutely right, we should target those. But what about the other half a million people? Sorry, there's a lot of questions there.
I'll try and work through them, councillor, but feel free obviously to poke me if I've missed any elements of it. Firstly, to refer back to the last question, said it was a shame about the Health and Wellbeing Board outcomes. So as I said, I don't want to go through them all. But, you know, for example, we've seen a doubling of Healthy Worcestershire participants with 99% of those achieving a health improvement rate, which is a big, big increase on the healthy lifestyle services that it replaced. We've seen increases in continuity of care, significant increases to some of the highest in the country and significant increases in the number of people accessing. And also we've got high satisfaction in relation to our social activity programme. So these will all come out in some detail. And of course, falls have fallen again, if you know what I mean. So that they are now significantly lower than the national average. So to move on to the question, and please, colleagues, step in. Just to cut across one thing which might be controversial, I realise, but our community development work is not dependent on district collaboratives. District collaboratives add an awful lot to the work that we do. But I would argue that every partner on this team, including public health, works directly from, with local communities as a countywide team. So first of all, it was a countywide team that first divided and analysed data across the whole county by LSOA, one of the smallest geographical units that you can get. We are very, very capable of drilling down and working with residents as a local area. I would also say that as LGR progresses, whether it's one Worcestershire or two Worcestershires, both of, for example, a South Worcestershire or Worcestershire whole uniture authority is going to have to work really hard to engage and empower local voice, no matter what its size. And I think in this county, as I said, whether it be two or one, we have an excellent reputation of getting down to street level and delivering on that. I don't know whether colleagues, I'm thinking particularly from primary care, who have experience in that as well.
Yeah, so I'll try and pick up where you left off, Lisa. I think it's probably worth mentioning as well, I've already shared with you how important primary care is in Worcestershire and how good it is. We've got really, really strong primary care. The way that we've been asked to organise ourselves over the last five years or so, groups of GP practices have come together into what we call PCNs, primary care networks. So that gives a really helpful footprint for the district collaboratives to work with and indeed other colleagues because you're not dealing with individual GP practices. You're dealing with groups who ideally are covering a bit of a neighbourhood-type footprint. So that does give us a mechanism to drill down into. And I think one of the legacies of the district collaborative, and speaking from a Wire Forest perspective, whatever happens to the district council, our district collaborative will continue. And one of the reasons that it will is because the relationships there are so strong now that we've got the police, the fire, the voluntary sector, we're all working together. We don't, it's really great that we've got the district council there, but those relationships won't disappear when the district council disappears. So I'm certainly very confident that that work will continue. And as Lisa's already said, we are networked really well across the Health and Care Trust, the acute trust and with public health. So I think there isn't a fear that that's going to disappear and dissipate at all. And then the other thing to say, as part of the NHS 10-year plan, primary care is absolutely being tasked with opening its doors and looking outside of the surgery. So much, much wider spread around the community itself. And as Julian was just describing, looking far more to things like prevention and population health, which hitherto primary care hasn't been tasked with. We are increasingly taking on those responsibilities and absolutely have the ability to drill down into our data, as Lisa was saying, into street level so that we can really understand at a granular level how we can support our communities.
Thank you very much indeed, and thank you too, Lisa. Councillor Oudal, please, and then councillor Price.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. What I'm about to say may sound as if I'm being negative. I'm not. It's just an observation which I've picked up on. And it's a concern which I have about intervention resistance from communities who are essentially proud people who do not appreciate what they perceive to be people coming from outside their communities, coming in and telling them what's wrong with them. And there's a resistance to that. There's going to be a natural resistance to that, especially in parochial communities like some of the ones which I represent. And they have previous poor experience of being promised a lot and very little actually being delivered. I wonder whether community engagement has to start with gaining trust and respect before actually starting to work with intervention work. We need to have all good old fashioned community workers on the ground, of community team builders, building up that respect and trust before we can start talking about the intervention which we need to have to actually improve healthy lifestyles. I do wonder whether you, what experience has been faulted by the activities which we've done so far and how we've overcome intervention resistance from communities who don't necessarily see themselves as deprived.
It's a really good point, councillor Oudal. And the way we get over intervention resistance is we don't intervene. The whole point of a community development model is you make the resources available to local people. So, you know, to take Westlands as the example as the pilot, but we're doing the same in Redditch, Wire Forest. I've got lists here for every district. We don't intervene beyond saying to residents and of course, the voluntary sector groups that have been working with them for years, who have that trust that you quite rightly sent her in your question. We give them the resource of money. We give them the resource of time and trust, which is incredibly important. And we leave them in control of what happens, which is how we end up with interventions, in quotes, that I certainly would never have thought of. So I think your question's absolutely spot on and central that if you find yourself intervening, well, you've got to ask yourself, you know, have I the mandate to go and intervene? Surely, no, of course, in a clinical and medical sense, I think that changes to a large degree. And even, to be honest, in some public health programmes around substance misuse, et cetera, there are treatments, interventions to deliver. But even there, we try to utilise lived experience groups, having people who have used the services on boards and co-design groups to help shape that. So I think your question goes to the heart of asset-based community development and why it's so important. Particularly as you referenced councillor Oudal, in some of those areas that face the biggest barriers towards positive health outcomes.
I don't know whether colleagues want to add anything.
I'd like to add one thing. When we went to look at Westlands, councillor Oudal, it was very clear that they were very nervous of professionals coming in and taking over their lives. And when we sat down and we did that first round table discussion, it was very much about what can we do to enable you to gain the confidence? It's about those wider determinants of health, which colleagues in the room will go, she's on about that again. But they're in every aspect of your life, aren't they? And it was about that enablement piece. And when you listened, you sat and you had the conversation and you listened and they said, could you help with this? The defibrillator, the fact that they didn't know how to operate the defibrillator and couldn't get access to it. The fact that the head teacher was having more and more pupils diagnosed with early help care plans. It was the whole ambience of the area, the fact that they hadn't got anywhere to sit and have a conversation because everything looked pretty tatty. And how we sat down and said to them, look, if we can change your environment, we can change your outcomes with you. But we're not doing this to you. We're doing, we want to be the enabler to you, to enable you all to have better outcomes. And their eyes lit up because we listened. We didn't go in all guns blazing and say, right, we're going to do X, Y and Z. The first question was what? How can we enable you? And I think that's the point. Asset-based community development, and I hope councillor Hardman doesn't mind me saying this. But in about 2019, he and I sat in an office at the old county hall and we'd both been watching a video about Wigan, hadn't we? And Wigan was absolutely exemplary in their asset-based community development and what they did with the communities to improve the outcomes. It's a bit more than just cooperation though. It's about listening. It's about enabling. It's about empowering those people to aspire. Because often these communities don't have the aspiration that many of us are lucky enough to be born with or the family and the support or the education and the aspiration to have the best job and, you know, whatever you aspire for, be it, you know, a nice property or a nice car, whatever. But that aspiration is what drives people to achieve the most in their life. And as a result, society gains from it. And when we had that conversation and we went away and the team at public health sat down with the Westlands team, they were really on their lowest ebb. And I urge you all to look at that YouTube where they were referred to themselves as wastelands and they were really down in their body language. To go back three months later and to see the input the public health team had had through their engagement and their enablement was phenomenal. And then to go back six months later and 18 months later, it's been a journey. But it's not, I wouldn't say it's any one particular thing we've done. I would say it's the collective enablement of that community. And I suppose that brings me on to one of my questions. What can we do as councillors to enable this journey to progress? Forget LGR, it's going to happen. The county council's going, the district council's going. What can we do to change the trajectory of society to empower these communities to have better outcomes? Please. Thank you.
I think there's two things, Chair, both of which you're already doing. I think number one is give us the air cover to take what are often very controversial decisions. And, you know, I've been very lucky in the cabinet members I've had in the time I've been here where they've all said, yeah, let's trust our residents. And that's the first thing. We look to elected members to really back us as we work in that asset-based way. And I think the second thing, again, you're already doing. If I look at yourself, councillor Kumar, councillor Fordington, councillor Oudal, councillor Wild, or so many. I've been swapping emails with recently about community development work because you are there on the ground. Councillor Kumar, for example, has led the way on Healthy Worcestershire and made the Healthy Worcestershire session in his area, very much in the image of that area. Councillor Oudal's been working with us on youth services around Dines Green. You know, I could go on forever. So elected members both as leaders of the council, giving us that political air cover and permission to act, and secondly, acting as community activists in your own right to be our eyes and ears and movers and shakers on the ground. And it's thanks to that that we've gained that national reputation in that work. And that's why people in We're Going to watching videos about us now because, you know, we've gone on that journey.
Thank you very much. I've got councillor Price and councillor Turner that'd like to speak. Is there anybody at this moment who wants to speak? Julian, please.
The question you just asked councillor May was very similar to my question. I don't work in all of these communities. I sit there in my ivory tower in the acute trust. But sitting there in the ivory tower, asking how to engage with this, how to engage our clinical teams with the development of community and neighbourhood health programmes. A very similar question, if I may. And my response to that, or the way I've approached that, is to engage and listen to the experts. In every community, we've got GPs who know their patch. They know the patients, they know their population. They, they know the patients, they know their population. So rather than me as an acute trust leader inflicting a, a particular course of action on communities and primary care, we, we now listen and ask what we can do to help. We also, as best as we can, engage with colleagues in public health because they know the communities far better than we do. So, so for some of us, it's about enabling, it's about asking what we can do to help. And then trying to do what we can to move services around, to facilitate in what, in, in what is a very difficult environment at the moment, from a resource and, and, and funding point of view. But it's about using what we've got to best effect, but listening to the experts honestly.
Thank you for that Julian. Councillor Price, thank you for your patience, and then councillor Turner.
Chair, thank you. The Westland work is very impressive and it really has brought some real tangible benefits to the residents. And I think that work deserves real recognition. However, for scrutiny to do its job, we need to look beyond the one example. So my question is, are the outcomes in the Westlands being seen across the 14 priority neighbourhoods? And how confident are we that these figures are solid and not just a one-off success?
Brilliant question. I think it, it's, you can pilot something and, you know, show off about it, but can you then replicate? Can you then deliver that? And I think my answer, sorry, I hate talking to someone with my back to them. I think that on one level, on the quantitative outcomes, it's too early to tell. So we have a lot of, an awful lot of work going on in Redditch because a lot of our priority neighbourhoods were, were, were seen in Redditch. What comes before the quantitative outcomes? So those shifts in hospital admissions and those shifts in children in need or social care outcomes are the qualitative outcomes, the stories. And they're already shining through in all of those areas. And in fact, we have a community stories event coming up where we're going to show all of those positive stories from the work that we've done beyond Westlands, in Wynyates, in other areas of Redditch, in the Marshes, in Wire Forest, in, in areas, in every district, you'll see those stories. And then, you know, we had to wait, I think for about 18 months. Because you not only have to wait for health to change, but that you then, as you know councillor May, have to wait for the data to catch up with those health outcomes. So it's a longer process to demonstrate the quantitative outcomes. But in terms of stories, people's testimonials, I suppose you could call them, of how this has changed my life. And also the qual, the qualitative outcomes in terms of numbers of people engaging, et cetera, will all be there. But the question is absolutely spot on. We need to constantly prove this method of working as we go.
I don't know whether anyone else wants to.
Yeah. So I also want to add in about, we've been, from public health, we've been constantly going out to all the elected members, you know, in your own areas and you know your communities well. If, if you spot or if you have some ideas and, you know, we are happy to support and just come up with what you think is the need there. We also want to, again, data gathering is very important in this to drive these projects. So we want to know about, from a community engagement point of view, with areas which are with unmet needs and how we can get in there. And then, you know, build on the support there. So we welcome with all your thoughts from anyone who wants to come up to us too, so that we can put some support in place.
Thank you councillor Bell, that's really helpful too. Can I just interject and I'll come back to you councillor Price? Ruth, wonderful primary care network. Not every primary care network is on the same level perhaps as, as yours. How are we feeding through with data from other primary care networks, please?
I'm, I'm happy to start if you want to pick up Lisa. So in, in terms of the data for, from primary care, I know everybody thinks the NHS should, well, certainly patients think that we share data very willingly, very easily. And in fact, that isn't the case. So we are piloting a piece of work and I think there are three areas in Worcestershire where we're doing this, matching the primary care data with the secondary care data, with the Health and Care Trust, with, with the ambulance service, et cetera, et cetera. That's literally live at the moment. And we are testing that in three primary care areas, but that will then roll out across the whole of Worcestershire. It's going to be a game changer for us, isn't it Lisa?
It is Chair, and I think the thing I'm most excited about in relation to NHS changes at the moment is neighbourhood health. You know, I looked at that and I thought absolutely spot on. I might argue with the definition of a neighbourhood, it's, it's a wee bit big. But nevertheless, it centres a community-driven approach. Public health in Worcestershire is leading on creating an offer from public health to the PCNs and whoever develops as a neighbourhood health providers to provide them with the data, including the statistical process control charts that we used to underpin the priority neighbourhood development work. So we're doing priority neighbourhood development work in every area of Worcestershire at the moment. I've got a list if you wanted me to read them out. But every neighbourhood health provider, for example, Wire Forest's PCNs will be supplied with that data, as well as the evaluation framework that councillor Price rightly said was so important to look at the outcomes.
I think Lisa, and thank you for that, I think it'd be really useful if you could share some additional information just to, to give some confidence, well, if you can pass it, if you could pass it through to Jo, then she will circulate it, is that okay please? Is that okay councillor Price? Okay, did you have a supplementary question before I jumped in?
Yes, I did.
Carry on.
How are we validating the data?
So the data that we talked about in terms of quantitative data, so the hospital admissions, emergency hospital admissions, so non-elected, and also the social care, they come from official statistics. So they come from either HES, which is the hospital episode statistics, or the children's social care own data returns. So it, it's not our data, it, it's data that we, and that's one of the problems with follow-up. You have to wait for that data to go into the data geeks at government, be validated, and then it comes back to us, which is a bit of a frustration but necessary. So it is all validated, but yeah.
Thank you very much indeed. Have you completed councillor Price? Right, councillor Turner then councillor Wild, please.
Thank you councillor May. Seems from what I've been listening to this morning, obviously, prevention is key. Hard to reach communities and also life expectancies has come to the fore. It seems like we're relying very heavily on volunteers. Many issues have been addressed, such as loneliness, mental health gets mentioned quite a lot, substance abuse and health. We're not all have these particular issues in our lives. Some of them have issues that are not self-inflicted. But, you know, sometimes life deals, deals you a, a rough hand. And particularly brought to my attention by one of the residents that I have the pleasure to represent. They brought the Namari Cury issue to my attention, which highlights deep troubling statistics that 111,000 people died in poverty across the UK, many of which suffered with terminal illness. And I think some of these people have worked very hard all their life and then for no fault of their own, find themselves in absolute object poverty. I think this is a total disgrace and dereliction of our duty. Can you explain how we can help support some of these people in this, this particular time of need? Thank you.
So just to be clear, the question councillor Turner, we're asking about how we work with people who are affected by chronic illness like, like cancer? Is that the question? Whatever their socio-economic status?
That's correct.
Yeah, so absolutely. Well, first of all, we don't just work in areas of socio-economic deprivation. Inevitably, we have a focus towards those areas because groups, the communities in those areas experience the poorest health outcomes. And by the way, no man is an island when it comes to health. And if someone in a more deprived neighbourhood than yours is experiencing poor health, that affects you too, because you're using the same hospital, maybe the same primary care centre as them. So we all benefit when inequity in health outcomes is balanced up, not just those at the sharper end of the socio-economic scale. But we do work in areas that are not necessarily traditionally known as deprived. Again councillor Kumar, your area in Blackwell had one of the first Healthy Worcestershire programmes. Not an economically deprived area by any stretch of the imagination, but a high rate of falls, a high, so this is why it's not always a linear relationship with finance. In terms of awful illnesses like cancer, I think both my current cabinet member and my former cabinet member met each other not long ago in a breast cancer awareness group, Ladies for Breast Cancer in Bromsgrove, I think near Bromsgrove, where we are supporting voluntary sector groups to support people affected by those terrible illnesses, both while they're in the illness and if, thank God, they go into remission, they support them through that period as well. I, I don't, I don't, I'm very happy to say more if councillor Turner doesn't feel I've answered everything there.
Yes, it's as, as I tried to explain within my piece there, you know, with economic conditions such as you could have saved all of your life and then suddenly you find yourself diagnosed with this terrible illness. And then as the Marie Curie research found, that 111,000 people died in poverty didn't start out with that, but if you've got, where you can no longer work, then everything could be taken away from you through no fault of your own. So it's a totally different scenario from what we've been discussing.
Can I just jump in here? I think this is why, if you don't mind me saying, reports like the Baroness Casey report, which isn't scheduled to come out till 2028, should come out sooner. Because assessing situations like adult social care to wait till 2028 with, with a profile of an aged population that we have got, these things need to be addressed because you are right, there are people out there who sadly with no, no risk, you know, no fault of their own, should I say, do fall into a situation where an illness comes along and it wipes their ability away to be able to continue to work. But also, the cost of care today is just going up and up. And we know that, I think it's 23,600, well, it was when I was on the cabinet. Below that, you get help, but above that, you don't. And that in today's figures is quite a low amount before we take people down to that level. So I think Baroness Casey needs to come forward, and I've said this, I sit on the Health and Wellbeing Committee at the LGA and I have said very, I've been very vocal in saying that we need to have Baroness Casey's reports sooner rather than later. Because cases like you've just stated, and examples you've stated councillor Turner, are unacceptable in 2025. I completely agree with you. Sorry, I've just given a bit of a political steer on it to try and give you some headspace to think about anything else.
No headspace required because I think we all agree with the point councillor Turner's making. It, it reminds me many, many years ago, and I don't want to work out how many, I was doing my PhD. I did it with caregivers, caregivers of people with dementia. And the number of times, that one of the phrases I remember that was said to me over and over again as I was talking to these caregivers was, we've been penalised for being prudent. Sometimes they'd be sat there with me in tears saying, you know, we're losing our home, we're losing all of our assets because I, we have to pay for the care out of, and so it was, it, it's a, it's a point that so many people worry about. And yeah, as you said, maybe reforms we'll see in the future will do something positive around that.
Thank you Lisa, I sincerely hope so. Now, I have councillor Wild, councillor Fordington and then councillor Harrison, please.
Chair, thank you. Can I just give a huge thank you to Lisa and her team and everybody that's come today? What we've been talking about is music to my ears, prevention. And I want to thank our chair as well, because I was on the Health and Wellbeing Board and I was so impressed with the initiatives that are taking place across the county. However, I do feel we're only scratching the surface. And it's in all our interests to be healthier. But somehow we've got a society that isn't necessarily having a healthy lifestyle at the moment. So there's been a big cultural shift and that's going to be an enormous challenge for society to change. But I've been trying, so many questions of mine have actually been answered, but I've been trying to narrow it down because this is a, a topic that we could be talking about all year really. And especially the last speaker who was talking about those problems, I mean, that brings a tear to my eye. But one of the things that does actually get in the way, I think somebody said we are heavily dependent on volunteers. And we're heavily dependent on some excellent people who put together various projects. And I was wondering, maybe for you Lisa, what does good look like? So what would that outcome be for you? And what do we need to have to achieve it? Because I have a suspicion that a lot of these things are lacking resources. And do we have enough resources? We might have human, but do we have the other resources as well?
Thank you councillor Wild.
That's such a big question and it's, no, it, it's a great question. And I just wonder whether we should invite other members of the panel to talk about their wish list. Because I could go on forever and I'm just, you know, almost you've said, if you could wave a magic wand. And trust me, I've thought about this and what I would do. But I'm just aware, I'm speaking a lot and shall we invite other members of the panel to speak? And then I'll come up with my answer, is that okay? I'm not buying thinking time, honestly, I'm not.
Any other contributors please? I think Julian's just about to hit the button, thank you.
We talk about never having enough resource. My personal view is we have a lot of resource, we'd always like more, but we have a lot. We also have, and despite the fact we all work really well together, we still have different organisations with different responsibilities. So some of what I'm looking for, and I think we've got some direction with the new NHS 10 year plan, but what I'm looking for in terms of reorganisation of services is, is some structural changes that allow us to work better together. And that allow us to move resource, money, staff between organisations to help do the right things for the population in, in the right place. Because sometimes honestly, that is hard, getting the right, the right movement between organisations. Over the last few years, I think we've become really good at, and I'm, I'm, I'm not saying it to blow our own trumpet, but more to, to, to give you reassurance as, as, as a committee that we are working far better together. But still, there are still some structural barriers and hurdles that take a bit of getting over. And if some of the, some of the funding streams, some of the contractual mechanisms were different, I think we would be able to make progress more rapidly with some of the work that we need to do.
Thank you for your candid answer there, we do appreciate it. Is the sharing of data, Julian, one of the biggest challenges?
Um, I'll let Dr McNally come in around, around sharing of data. It, it, it's, it's, it's a constant, I, I, personally, I think it's a challenge, but I think it's, it's a, there is challenge there for good reason because each and every one of us has got concerns about use or abuse of our own data. And I think everyone in this room would expect that their data was used wisely, appropriately, and, and to best effect. So there are a number of hurdles that, that we need to jump through in order to share data. But I think a lot of those questions are entirely valid and reasonable, and we'd all want them to be asked of our own data.
Thank you very much indeed.
So yes, Chair, I think sharing of data is a barrier nationally. Um, and I would argue that we need some national leadership on this. Um, I would ask, why is every system having to battle with the challenge of shared care records and integrated data sets separately? And, you know, we've seen the emergence of the Federated Data Platform. I've still not met that many people who actually know what it is and what it can do. So I think we need national leadership. It shouldn't be, um, for PCNs, hospitals, primary care, um, community trusts, social care, to work out in Worcesters, to be battling with the same issue in Worcestershire that they're battling with in Northamptonshire. Let's have a national solution rolled out that has all the information and governance standards in place, all the assurance to the general public that the data sharing will be used for their benefit, but never to their detriment and never be sold, et cetera. And of course, most people, most patients, when you ask them, as long as they're assured that data will stay private and confidential, they want their data shared because they're sick of telling their story to every different health professional when they meet. Um, so we, national leadership on data integration, I think, is key. Just on the volunteers, uh, thing, I, I think what I would love to see is every single policy or strategy or programme or proposal that comes in front of a committee such as this, that we're required to address, how are we involving the public in this? And in particular, at what stage? Um, because, you know, you know, there's almost like a step ladder of engagement. At, at the lowest is where you develop a strategy and then get a group of friendly residents around and quickly show it to them and get them to tick a box to say they like it. Right, what about involving people earlier? What about involving people before you even decide what you're going to do? Uh, and, and so what we're talking about is co-design, the co-production. And of course, why does the involvement of local people need to stop once a programme's in place? That's where we come to co-delivery. Volunteers and volunteering is incredibly beneficial, both to the volunteer and to the organisation they're volunteering, volunteering for. But often they're volunteering to deliver someone else's plan. And I think we, are we moving to the point where actually the ideas that we're making happen are residents' ideas, not a professional in a back room? So my big wish for volunteering and community and what good looks like, as you ask, councillor, is involvement of local people right at the start, not halfway through or towards the end?
Thank you very much, Dr McNally. So I think we then move on to councillor Fordington, please.
Thank you all. I've got a question regarding, um, empowering school. I really want to look into it in depth, to be honest, because I want to know how are you able to measure each school? And how are you actually reaching the raw areas at the same time too? And what's your timeframe for, for you to be able to do this? Thank you.
So if I talk about the school grants programme, councillor Fordington, and maybe a community trust uh, might want to come in around health visitors, school nursing, et cetera. So you're not just getting my Scouse accent for the whole meeting. So in terms of the school grants, firstly, we've made, how do we ensure spread? And who's chosen for the grants? They're available to everyone. And so we've promoted the grants through, uh, head teachers' networks, through all the other school networks. Our colleagues in education have done a great job promoting those. We also get them out to nurseries and other education organisations. They're eligible as well. We very rarely say no to a grant application. But what we do is sometimes say, "Well, yes, but if you did it this way." Uh, so sometimes we, we help co-design. But I would say of all the grant applications I'm sent, 90% are an immediate yes. And another 10% will work with the school. And then how do we measure the effects? With the school, the school grants are £3,000 maximum each time. And I think you have to be very careful with any community development, that you don't give someone, I don't know, £2,500 and then give them a stack of questionnaires and data returns, et cetera, because it, teachers have got enough paperwork. Um, and also sometimes the benefits that can be brought out are better seen in the stories and the narratives and the testimonies of the kids and the teachers and the parents that are working with them, rather than... Sometimes we think questionnaire-based data is somehow superior to qualitative data, to qualitative stories. What we are doing at the moment is taking some of those video transcripts and using AI to find a thematic analysis. So we can do some data reduction with them. Um, I know my team are watching this, and just in case they're panicking, it's me that's doing it because I'm the AI fan, not, not asking them. Um, which we'll be able to bring back to you to show some of the common themes that came out. But we tend with schools to take a qualitative approach because school outcomes are measured to an inch of their life anyway as part of the education system. I'll hand over to NHS colleagues to talk about the more clinical side of things.
You'll forgive me, I don't have a heap of detail because obviously this is one of the services, um, that, that the trust provides. But I do know that the service has undergone quite a restructure, the old Starting Well Service, where we used to work with partners. Now our 0-19 Public Health Services. Um, and as Lisa says, a range of services in there, health visitors, school, school nursing, breastfeeding support. There's a lot of volunteers actually support the breastfeeding support. Um, they've transitioned from partners over to the trust now, um, or are in the process of doing. And so, and in addition to that, in terms of school, there's the West Programme, working with children, young people, um, providing emotional support. If you want further details, let me know and then I can find out from the service. Is that okay?
Thank you.
I can also, the school nursing team are working on what is called the School Screener. And we'll have some more data for you from that as we go. But that is a more quantitative assessment of the social and emotional and health-related wellbeing of kids. So we'll be able to show you trends on that. Sam at the back there is just, she'd be devastated I'm mentioning her, but she's just sent me through the stats. We've given grants to, to date, 380 schools and colleges. So this is really motivated and captured the imagination of our educational colleagues across. So together with a brilliant provider of school nursing and health visitors, uh, there's a lot going on.
Thank you very much indeed. Any supplementary? Great, thank you very much. Councillor Harrison, Oudel, and then councillor Kumar, please.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. A question to, to Ruth, please. Quite kind of a, a, a broad question. Um, can you tell us a bit more about the, the Wire Forest Accelerator Programme, please? Particularly things like numbers, because if you're going, you've got multidisciplinary care into people's homes, how many people are you touching?
Sorry, Paul, could you say that again?
You, you, the Wire Forest Accelerator Programme, you, you, you say you've got multidisciplinary care in people's homes. So how, how, how many people is this touching? And, and, and also at the end of the piece on, on Wire Forest, you, you say that the, um, early outcomes show a 19.4% reduction in, in emergency emissions over 12 months. I, I, I realise that you haven't got all the, the numbers in yet, but again, can, can you give us an idea how many, how many people this is touching, please?
Okay, so there are two parts of the question, and I'll start with the multidisciplinary teams. So it's, um, these multidisciplinary teams are groups of professionals that come together. And those professionals will have seen people potentially in their own homes, but then come back and have a multidisciplinary team meeting, which could be virtual or face-to-face. Um, specifically in the accelerator, we were looking at people with, with frailty, so generally frail elderly people. And the MDTs would look at where we needed to have a bigger conversation about how we better support those individuals. So relative, typically MDTs tend to cover a relatively small number of people at any one time, but, but we would hold them monthly. So the people are being visited in their own homes by health and care professionals, but the MDT would take place back in, back in the practice or, or another convenient place. Um, the second part of the question was about the outcomes. The admissions, and if it says emergency admissions in there, I apologise, because it should be all, all admissions. It wasn't just emergency admissions. So that, that was in general, across the Wire Forest district, our admissions to hospital have reduced significantly over the last 12 months, which we're delighted about. And, and we're, we're keen to replicate that and really get under the skin of it. Actually, going back to some of the conversations about data earlier, and that data didn't come from my system. And I, the reason I'm saying that will become clear in a moment. So our practice systems, we only record if somebody's had an admission, if we get a letter from the acute trust to say they've had an admission. So actually, the new data set that we'll have, where we're actually matching Julian's data from the hospital with primary care data, will give us a much more, um, stronger view so that primary, as primary care, we can understand who's been in and out of hospital. But that was an independent piece of work that looked at just general admissions from the Wire Forest, which are bucking the national trend. Um, we'd like to attribute some of that to the work that we've been doing, but I think it's probably too soon to say.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Ruth, when would you be able to come back and tell us more about this?
Um, I'm not sure. Um, could, could I let you know? It's because that joined-up data piece is largely out of our hands. But I think it is something that the, um, group would be really interested to hear about. So as we get some of those results through, I'm, I'm looking at Sarah because it's an ICB-led project. Go on.
So the whole neighbourhood health delivery framework that's coming out, and that, that will take a little, it's started with the accelerator programmes, but then we're working into how this now becomes county-wide. So this will take a little bit of time for us to, to organise ourselves, but as soon as there's any data, we will be very happy to bring it back.
Thank you very much. It sounds exciting if we're actually managing to keep people out of the acute system. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I've now got councillor Oudel, please.
Yeah, thank you again, Chair. Um, a question regarding something which does fascinate me greatly is about public health-assisted access to physical activity, um, especially for adults. And I think it was a tragedy, tragedy of the 2012 Olympics that we failed really providing a legacy. And I think it's fair to say that the vast majority of people over the age of 16, when they leave school or 18, do not access any form of organised sport. And I think that's a sign of a, of problems which we have, which will also impact not only physical but mental health with social isolation. Personally, I took up walking rugby a couple of years ago. Don't stop me when I'm walking with a rugby ball in my hands. It could be dangerous. Uh, but access to sporting clubs for both adults and children is something which has become a problem. Whether that's, um, access to swimming, bowling, martial arts or yoga. I did a scrutiny exercise 10 or so years ago when we identified that the biggest problem was for single mothers with young children who couldn't access, access physical activity because they couldn't provide, couldn't access childcare. And that was their main soft blockage into accessing support. So I'm asking, what kind of support can we provide to support sports clubs to enable physical activity? And whether social prescribing this is something which we can actually actively pursue?
Thank you, councillor, sorry, Dr McNally.
Councillor McNally, don't ever say that. God, you wouldn't want me. Um, yeah, so firstly, a correction, I said something earlier, I said 380 schools have got grants. Uh, it's 380 grants, uh, but most schools have had at least one grant. And relating it to councillor Oudel's really, uh, uh, important question on physical activity is those school grants have fell generally into two categories, physical activity or mental, emotional wellbeing. A large percentage of the grants have focused in those two areas. The schools have lapped up the chance to, uh, do something to their school environment or buy some equipment or, or engage in something that gets kids active. Because what the teachers say every time is if I've got little Johnny flying around the playground, being on a balance bike or running around doing the daily mile, when he comes in and has to do his maths, he's more focused, he's more relaxed. And, um, maybe we should do it before meetings as well, so we'll do that for full council on Thursday. Um, and councillor Oudel, it's appropriate that he's raised this question because he's done an awful lot with us in terms of hooking us up with those organisations that provide opportunities, especially to people who maybe live with a disability, to get active. Uh, a good example of the relationships he's helped us form is with the Worcester Warriors. In particular, the women's team, youth team, and also, uh, a, 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 a number of members have hooked us up with their local swimming pool, uh, community swimming pools, which I'll be honest, I didn't know they existed until I started to go and see them. Uh, and, and I think one of the things we're helping them with is promotion as well as funding. For me, one thing I will say that's slightly controversial, just to spice things up a bit, is too often, I think, in local government, we default to leisure centres. And there are lots of communities around our, our county and lots of people who will never go to a leisure centre. They, they find them terrifying, they find them imposing. And, um, you know, we often, we've now banned almost, haven't we, the phrase, "hard to reach"? And, and we know the cure for, for if something's hard to reach is to move closer to it. And I feel that about physical activity. We need to bring initiatives designed by local people into their local area that they can access en masse, especially those groups of people who would never go near a leisure centre. Um, and that includes a lot of people in our most deprived areas, a lot of people in our ethnic minority groups, and others that just wouldn't feel comfortable going to a leisure centre. So let's bring sport and activity into communities.
Thank you, Lisa, very much indeed. Finally, councillor Kumar.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I would like to say thank you, Lisa, because this is my favourite topic, public health, as you have said, because it has taken a full circle. More than 30 years ago, when I was a young doctor, public health was the big thing. You will see hordes on buses here, there, everywhere about public health, and it just disappeared. And then when Lisa came on the scene, I was quite pleased that Worcestershire has got yet again life in public health. So it's not just you, but I think it's good to know public health has got a renaissance here. So may it continue. Uh, so I've got a couple of points to raise here, talking of Dr Bellitt's point where he said uh, that he, his department, i.e. the acute sector, is liaising with others at this juncture, which is a good news. In my previous life as a consultant in pain medicine, I always believed in bio-psychosocial model. And this is where exactly you're coming to, is to talk with various agencies to get the right for an individual that is a patient. So that's the right way forward, is to use the bio-psychosocial model. Now, I've got just a couple of questions here, Lisa, is you've given away so many grants. One of the things is, uh, as an ex-chair of a, uh, school governors, I worked in a very deprived area. Middle schools were famous for vapes, here, there, everywhere. Are we doing anything with regards to educating about vapes? Can I have an answer about that?
Yes, thank you, councillor Kumar. So, yes, vaping, relatively new phenomenon. And, um, in fact, a good And in fact, a good example of how any move to a community development wasn't about me as an individual, that it was happening already in an awesome public health team, was when I first arrived, I already found them in the middle of a consultation with young people in local schools around vaping. And in particular, they were getting the kids to help design the posters, the messages, et cetera, around vaping. And it was quite interesting that they asked me which poster I thought was best, and I chose a poster with a kid with a load of vape around his head, and I thought, that looks ridiculous, so that will put people off vaping. And there was a teenage girl with us from the school and she said, "You're wrong, you old thing", she said, "You're wrong". She said, "Actually, a lot of kids who vape think that's cool", you know, blowing these massive clouds of vape. And she chose a different one. So it just shows, doesn't it, the importance of involving people from the start. We've had a couple of very proactive head teachers who have worked with us on that, and I think we are starting to cut through. That's only dealing with half of the equation, of course, because we can try to get over the message to young people that while vaping is much, much safer than smoking, and anyone who's, you know, smoking can use vaping to come back from that, it's not a safe alternative. That's the demand side. But as those of you in business know, there's also a supply side, and we're hitting that hard, too, harder than we've ever done before. Our trading standards team work with the police and have confiscated so many illegal vapes in the last year or so. We're running out of storage space, we have to keep them for evidence, et cetera. And we're now closing places down. So the police said to us, and we did this with Bromsgrove and Redditch, didn't we, Chair, initially, that the police were saying to us, "Look, the problem is, you bust these guys, you get your sniffer dogs in, and you find their bunch of illegal vapes, and usually illegal tobacco, but they're open again next couple of days". So we got some more legal capacity into the district councils to work on actually closing these retailers down. And so the message now is, if you flog illegal tobacco, illegal vapes, which includes any vapes to someone underage, then we will close you down now. And that has made a big difference. So we're working on both supply and demand, and I think we're cutting through. What we now need is good national comparative data on the number of children vaping. Not easy to get, but we should put our heads together on how we're going to measure that going forward.
Thank you, Lisa. Just got one thing about community development projects. You started off, but this has to continue. Is there a template which people can use? Because sometimes the money runs out. So is there a template which people can use in other districts, where people have ideas, but they say, "Where do I go from here"? Is there a template for this? Thank you.
Yeah, so first of all, on the money running outside, that raises an important point of sustainability. And the Westlands told a story there as well, is we injected a significant amount of money into the Westlands from the public health budget, but we knew we couldn't keep doing it. So one of the things that the committee that formed, with residents association and others, decided upon is, one of their ambitions was to be sustainability, to be sustainable. And surely enough, they managed it, they then got external funding from the Lotto and from other sources. The local housing association put resources in as well. So I think money does run out, and it's important to think about that in every project. In terms of a template, we have had other areas come and say, "How do you do it"? And I'm always a little bit reluctant to go into too much detail, because of course, the nature of asset-based community development is that it's going to be different everywhere you go. And I made this mistake. So I went to Redditch and started talking to volunteer sector groups, and I was saying, "In Westlands, we made a film with the residents". And they were like, "Yeah, all right, well, whatever". And I was realising, I was trying to apply a template from one success to another. So I think, as long as we use as our anchor that principle of keeping our own ideas to ourselves, at least initially, and working with the ideas of local people as the subject matter, then we can't go far wrong. And that general principle of doing work, doing our work with residents, not doing it to them, then we can't go far wrong. So I'd say, rather than a template, there's a well-defined set of principles, and we certainly don't own them. Malvern Hills District Council are doing great work, for example, asset-based community development for a long time. There's examples all over the county, so yeah, no copyright there. Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Hardman has raised his hand halfway through that.
Yeah, thanks very much. That's very kind of you, Chairman, to ask me to speak. I just wanted to ask two questions, really. One, when you confiscate illegal vapes, are you analysing what is in them? Because I did see a stat from a northern authority who had been doing this, and they found that 1 in 8 of the illegal vapes was contaminated with spice, which is a drug very popular in prisons, rather strangely. And I just wanted the committee ought to reflect, I think, on the government's 10-year health plan. And I'd be interested to know whether you see this as being competition from Whitehall, or a potential for partnership, since I would suggest, looking at the government's 10-year health plan, we are in some points in front of the game here.
Yeah, so councillor Hardman's absolutely spot on to bring the contaminants issue. And we did do this. I mentioned a head teacher who was particularly proactive. We worked with his school, and it was actually, the BBC worked with us on this project. And they took some of the vapes that the young people were getting hold of to a lab and tested them. And the number of nasties that they found in these vapes, you would not believe. Because of course, illegal vapes don't need to pass any quality standards as such. And of course, often retailers who are willing to sell to kids will be willing to sell illegal vapes, so kids disproportionately access those illegal vapes. All sorts of really dangerous poisons. And absolutely councillor Hardman's right to mention spice, and the other one, of course, is THC, which is the active. And these things, our colleagues in the hospitals will be seeing lots of examples of people coming in with oil droplets, et cetera, on their lungs, from vapes that have not been through quality standards. So contaminants is a big issue. It was interesting, though, and slightly disappointing, that the BBC went back to one of the lads at that school with the cameras on him and said, "Here's all the stuff, all the nasty stuff that was in that vape, is that going to make you stop vaping"? And he went, "Nah". So, you know, sometimes teenagers and health risks, obviously, we all remember what it's like to be a teenager, and you're immortal. So I think really pinning down that supply side, and those retailers who are willing to profit off our children's health and wellbeing, that needs to be a big target. And the government happily joined forces with the government on any of this, as long as, you know, if they're asking us to do stuff, it needs to be properly resourced, and again, rooted in people's opinions and people's ideas. Thank you. And of course, the messaging is always, it's a step down from smoking, vaping, it's not to be used as a recreational thing. Okay, thank you very much for that. I don't want you to go anywhere at the moment, because what I want to ask the committee now is, we've had a very extensive conversation around this, and I think it's been really insightful, and I hope you've all found it beneficial. But when we walk away from these meetings, what we want to feel is that we've got something tangible to work on going forward, that we all, partnership-wise, work together on it. So what would we like to see? When would we like to see this report come back? What actions would you, any suggestions around the actions from this meeting today? Further information, could I ask? Thank you, councillor Wells.
Chair, this is always the hard bit. To justify the two hours we've spent talking to each other, the question that we always pose, I try to pose to myself, is, "What so what"? So forgive me, it would be difficult to begin another conversation at this point. So please indulge me. On the basis of what you've said today, and you've been very lucid, and I think the passion that you have for your subject area is evident for all to see. When I asked about tangible outcomes, I wasn't entirely convinced I'd had a full response to that. So I wonder if perhaps we can get something on paper that we could share with everybody, so I can understand the tangible outcomes that we claim we have. You gave a couple, I think, you gave me one firm one. Well, I don't want to, Chairman, just begin another conversation at this point, because we could do the whole thing twice if we're not careful. We talked about the 10-year plan being three years in, and I spoke about review and reform as we move forward. There was mention that it's likely to come in some guise to be forward at some point. I just want to clarify where and when, because we're three years into that policy. And this will be the bit that's hardest for you guys to accept. It seemed to me today, you were very good with the data, with the survey, with the analysis of what's needed and what Worcestershire looks like going forward. What I wasn't entirely convinced about was the ability of the county council itself, as a fairly serious and robust body, with probably less granular local knowledge that's probably needed to make the real difference, to deliver the outcomes that we all seek. I wasn't entirely convinced by what you'd said today, that the county council alone can do that. I think you accepted that. And we talked about schools as a way in, we talked about the NHS and surgeries as a way in. I challenged you about the role of districts in creating the collaboratives and moving that forward. You said to me that actually, we can probably do it without the districts, to paraphrase what I think I heard you say. Again, this must be frustrating, because you want to come back and challenge that. This is the hard bit, so forgive me. And I would be more than happy to accept anything after the meeting that pushed back on what I've just said. But that's how I take it. And I want to talk to you finally about local government reform. And this is something that will impact, I think, on every meeting we have from now on, in terms of how we deal with the hiatus ahead of us, and how the future might look, either two-model or one-model Worcestershire, and how in that circumstance, which is only two years down the road, the 22 to 32 plan will still be safeguarded and delivered in that evolving circumstance. So that's what I heard today, Chairman, and I'm sorry for some of that. I know how frustrated I'd feel if I'd just heard that. But I don't think we can start another conversation.
So without wishing to start another conversation, LGR is happening, as we're told. So I think possibly a more positive way is about the long-term revision of the strategy, I get all of that, but also about how we empower whatever new council comes along to continue the good work that is happening, and to build on the good work. And my suggestion will be that we look at how our colleagues that aren't in the room today are empowered, so they go back to their communities and pass back information to colleagues round this table, to say, "You know, we've got this issue here, can you come and have a conversation"? So that you, Lisa, councillor Bell and the team can go out, visit, have those conversations, and then bring on partners to improve outcomes. Because what I'd want to see, and I know local government reorganisation is going to be difficult, but it's not just the district that's going, it's the county that's going as well, it's a whole new unitary. And you want a flash to bang, and you're only going to achieve a flash to bang if the work, the framework is there, when you close down both of those existing authorities or forms of delivery of local government, and you get it ready to go on day one with the new framework, whatever it is. So this is about empowerment. So I would take the perspective, take the districts out. I don't think anybody's decrying councillor Wells the good work that's gone on. And I would hope that our local strategic partnership will carry on, regardless of who is re-elected or whatever happens, because I know, from a Bromsgrove perspective, I attend it every month, I see what partners are doing around the table, you know, Ruth's been at the meeting, Lisa's been at the meeting, it's very proactive. I would want that to continue. And for it to continue, it's the framework behind it that will enable that to happen, not necessarily what form of local government we have. So I want it to be, I would suggest, and if the committee's in agreement, we have a positive view on reviewing the 22 to 2032 programme and strategy, okay? But also putting within that the tools to enable this, to have that forward trajectory, not beyond 2032, but up to 2052. So we're building to address health disparities, and the people that have, I don't know, neurological conditions, have clear pathways. So partners here don't have the defines of data that says that Julian finds it difficult to go and talk to somebody in whatever network to get that data. So we can try and do a more proactive prevention, and I'm not decrying what we're doing today, what I'm saying is, it's building on that. Prevention's better than a cure, isn't it? It's not just a saying, it's a reality. Does the board happy with that?
What is that in terms of an outcome, what you just said?
It's about the framework, enabling people, residents, GPs, practitioners, to have that framework. So regardless whatever tier of local government we have, whatever the government decides in November, between November and March of this year and next year, we're in a position that we not only have what we've already got, but we build on what the outcomes have been. So we enable our communities, regardless really, whoever gets selected, to say, "Look, it's almost oven-ready, this is what we've been doing to date, we're going to build on this work, we've got this plan here that was established by the Health and Wellbeing Board up to 2032 and beyond, but we need the building blocks in place". It's almost like a risk analysis of your health economy. It's making sure you're meeting the shortcomings, but also having that forward trajectory, we know where we're going. And the aspiration being that we have the best outcomes for our residents in Worcestershire, regardless of where you live in this county. So, Chair, I won't comment on the LGR thing, because that's being played out in political forums that don't involve me. I just want to address the thing about not hearing tangible outcomes. I think we've just sat here for a good couple of hours, reeling off outcomes that are incredibly tangible, including to the people that experience them. So we've talked about reduced numbers of falls, increases in physical activity, increased uptake in programmes like screening. I talked about a reduction in social care referrals, a reduction in hospital admissions. The people who are using Healthy Worcestershire, 99% of them have reported at least one health improvement, and they've reported reductions in their use of emergency healthcare. These outcomes are incredibly tangible, and I just want to add that also, in addition to all that, not every tangible outcome can be measured. And that's why I would always, alongside those really quite, I think, impressive tangible outcomes that affect every aspect of people's lives, from the young, even before you're born, smoking in pregnancy has dropped significantly, thanks to our community development programmes, that come along to the community stories event. And here, some of the people personally bearing witness to the difference to their lives that engaging in these community development programmes have had, and then you will see tangible, real tangible outcomes. Thank you. I think we had some more case studies in here of the neighbourhood teams, et cetera, and the work we're doing. I just think it really brings it to life, you know, west coast to my heart, because I lived it for so many months with you and the team. So I get that. But what I do want is, my aspiration is that people walk out of here and think, "Wow, the work, good work that's going on, but what we're doing to build on that". Because nobody ever wants to stop still, do they? And I know you're the least likely person, and councillor Bell will be the same, we're always aspirational for our residents. So is the committee happy with what I've just proposed? Lots of nods. Thank you very much indeed. Is there anything else that you'd like as a result of this wonderful conversation we've had for an hour and a half, which has been most enlightening and much appreciated, and much appreciated? Thank you all very much for coming along this afternoon. You've given up your clinical time and your time in your businesses to come here, I'm really, really grateful. Thank you very much, and a safe journey home. Thank you. So if we can move straight on to the work programme then, please. You will remember that your request was to look at neurological conditions and
And Jo and Emma have confirmed to me that overview of common neurological conditions will be coming, hopefully, to the Health Overview and Scrutiny Committee on the 10th of November this year. Thank you all, safe journey. And the winter planning and pharmaceutical needs, well, we are hoping to get the pharmaceutical needs papers in for the 10th of October, but the winter planning update will definitely be on the 10th of October. And Tom, nice to see you in the back of the room. Your integrated care board update will be in November, please, and we look forward to that. Thank you all very much for contributing this afternoon and your attendance here. Thank you very much. Safe journey home, bye-bye. You can just wait, we're just cutting the live feed as we speak.